You need something?
Thanks, Chuck. Any board and committee reports? Any citizens' concerns? We have a public hearing at 7:30. So I'll see how much of the other things I can get through so people might not have to wait as long. And that means Margaret, yourself, would you maybe like to go up to the microphone in case there's some questions? This is Margaret Gillis of the Museum of Old Newbury. She has a request to place signs throughout the town of Newbury from May 23st through June 15th for the 36th Annual Garden Tour to be held June 13th to 14th, 2015. And you talked to Sam, right, at first?
I talked to him a couple of years ago and we stay within the premise. I know you don't want anything blocked. And it has to be safety concerns when you're putting out the signs. Two of our gardens are in Newbury, so it's always with careful coverage.
Yep.
We're pretty conscientious and we really try to be picking up the signs immediately after the tour. Sometimes they get picked up that afternoon, Sunday afternoon, but they will be picked up by Monday at the latest. And that's, you know, your average small road signs are about 12 by 18. We've done it for a number of years.
Well, that was my next question. So you've done this in years past and you coordinated it through Sam before?
Yep. Unfortunately, I am the chairperson again.
Ellen, do you have any concerns that, is any? No. So I think where it's happened before-
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Now, this is one that we can discuss a little. Review and revise if necessary and approve the current commercial clam permit application for 2014 to 2015 season and the current regulations for the clam industry and taking of sea worms in Newbury, April 1st, 2014 to March 31st, 2015, in preparation for February 1st, 2015, distribution for the 2015-16 season. I was thinking that we might need a little time to look at these because they're not tremendously complicated along. But when I asked if it might take some time for review, what Ellen and others had mentioned to me is there is no changes in the application or the regulations. There's no changes. So if you want to take a look at these now, knowing there's no changes, we can vote them up or down tonight. And if you think you might want to look at them longer, we can put it off to the next meeting. So that's up to you guys.
My only question would be, have there been any requests for revisions?
What I was told, and I'll ask Ellen one more time. I was told that the, when the boards met, there was none, right? The clam commissioners? The clam commissioners were basically okay things and there was nothing?
I was told by the town first that there were no requests for any revisions.
Right, there were no requests for any revisions. No. However, if you want to put these off to look at them the next meeting, that's fine too.
I read over them and I think I'm on a similar vein as Chuck where if there hasn't been a problem, I don't see any reason we should be pushing for a change.
Hearing that, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, why don't we go to, you know what? We can probably knock off all these. Okay. These are to review, approve, and sign. That means for us not to run off before Ellen can get us to sign these. The 2015 business license renewals, they are as follows. I will do what I usually do. I'm going to just read the name of the business and probably try to get through the location. And catch me if I read the wrong location, guys, like you usually do. And if there's one you want to hold, we'll come back to it afterwards. Otherwise, we will approve all them as one. All American Automotive LLC, 61 Main Street. Ampit Inc., 34 High Road. Seaco Cycle, 4 Newburyport Turnpike. Plum Island Bicycle Rentals, 4 Plum Island Boulevard. Tolman Automotive, 24 Middle Road. Perlol Company Inc., Lands End. Sadie's Hair, 61 Fruit Street. Hightail Acres, 120 High Road. Fall Pond Towing, 88 R. Newburyport Turnpike. Beachcomber Restaurant Inc., 23 Plum Island Boulevard. Main Street Mini Mart and DJ Liquors, 53 Main Street. Jaden Autos, 6 Newburyport Turnpike. Flukes and Fines, 160 Hay Street. Special Interest Autos of Newburyport, 196 Scotland Road. Newbury Auto Sales Inc., 60 Newburyport Turnpike. Pearson's Hardware, 6A Fruit Street, Byfield. Bob's Lobster, 49 Plum Island Boulevard. Henry Sebacker Custom Building, 57 Southern Boulevard. Newbury Kayak and Canoe, 291 High Road. Carla Capalupo, 26 Plum Island Boulevard. The Quilted Acorns, 72 Newburyport Turnpike. Store U-Serv Self-Storage, 12 Kent Way. Aryan Trading Limited, 108 Turnpike. Wiley P. Dogs, 86 Newburyport Turnpike. Wiley P. Classics, 86 Newburyport Turnpike. Applied Automotive Technology, 40 Point Road. Angie Service Inc., 1 Plum Island Boulevard. Auto Works of Hampton Falls, 88 Newburyport Turnpike. And finally, the last one, the Bond, 286 High Road.
Motion to approve all, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but I think you may have skipped Sadie's Hair at 6J Fruit Street.
Oh, he mentioned, he said it. And if I didn't, we'll say it again. Go ahead. We'll be sure.
Sadie's Hair, 6J Fruit Street.
All right, good. Any discussion?
Please second.
Oh.
I thought I seconded. Sorry.
All right, let's drop it up here. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. One Day Local License Protection Fire Company. It's a retirement party, I believe, for the Riley Police. It's somewhere kind of inside here. Ellen, is everything basically in order?
Everything is perfectly in order.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a letter of resignation from the DPW Director, Tim Leonard, Senior. I will read it. "To the members of the Board of Selectmen and to the Town Administrator, please accept my letter of resignation effective January 12th, 2015, as I plan to retire from my position as the Director of Department of Public Works for the Town of Newbury. Sincerely, Timothy A. Leonard, Senior." So that's accepted with some regret, I suppose, some sadness. What else have we got that we can get to before we move forward? Say it again?
Greg and Kathy?
Yep. No, I think we can probably work through, because Sam had spoken, I guess. This is all business. And following the recommendation made by the Building Inspector and the Board of Selectmen during the 7th, 9th, 2014 Board of Selectment meeting, Plum Island Beachcomber filed an appeal with the state, who's ever going to go up the microphone? Kathy? "With the State of Massachusetts Board of Building Regulations and Standards, this appeal pertained to the decision of the Building Inspector and the restaurant would be classified as a nightclub if live entertainment was consistently offered. The appeal of the Plum Island Beachcomber was heard by the BBRS on December 16th, 2014. Approval was given for live entertainment on Sunday only from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And Kathy, that's what you request is to have live amplified music on all Sundays from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m."
Correct.
Now, what Ellen had mentioned before is that the state has dragged their feet in getting you your certificate or statement or whatever they were going to send you. You don't have anything in hand, right?
No. But I know that Sam would have-
And I mean, that's what Sam was going to be here for. So I think we could make decisions on some of those things tonight. And if Sam found something that we did wrong because something was out of whack, we could probably make a contingent upon Sam. Or we could wait till Sam gets here.
Sam said that he would be here.
Yeah. Do you want to hold?
I know that the state had called Sam to advise him that, and we have spoken to the state too about, just takes them, you know, they're transcribing the notes. So that's what takes some time with the holidays. That's why it's delayed. But they say about 30 days, so any day it should be. But the woman at the state had called and left a message with Sam saying that since he was present at the meeting, he, you know, was aware that it was passed, that, you know, the paperwork is coming, that, you know, it should hold some-
Now, the only thing we might need Sam for is to maybe understand exactly if there was any wording that would trigger a different action by us tonight. I think what the concerns of the town was before, a lot of times when you get a decision, the decision contains certain, you know, codicils or standards or something that might regulate or condition what we allow you to do. I don't know if it's just going to be a ruling that says, "We hereby say that you're not a nightclub if you have live entertainment." And that's what I'm, what we're all, what's all holding us up a little bit. So maybe, if you don't mind waiting a while, now, I mean, because the only difference is it's probably going to be the live amplified music again that we're going to get into discussion about, meaning the amplified. What time does Sam say he'd be back? Do you know?
Well, their meeting started at 7:00 as well, so I would say 7:00 to 8:00.
Can you, what did they say to you at the meeting?
We went through the definition of a nightclub and that, you know, a lot of the things that we didn't, we didn't fall into that definition. You know, a stage, the dark lighting, you know, there was, you know, late service, you know, no food. We're serving 4 to 7 on a Sunday afternoon. It's still daylight out, still, you know, family friendly. And that's what they had said is that, yeah, we didn't fall into that category as a nightclub on a Sunday, 4 to 7. So I asked about, you know, a possible Saturday, you know, a Saturday like we do the fundraiser and all that. And he said, "Well, that would be up to the, you know, up to the town." You know, like I say, if we did it with the fire support, you know, that we had, you know, we did those last couple of ones. Yeah, the one-day licenses.
Now, I don't want to put Ellen on the spot either, but the request we have tonight is, excuse me, I was going to cough all night, is a request to have live amplified music on all Sundays from 4 to 7 p.m. You basically had that, right?
We did at one point, yes.
Right. And then it became more of an unamplified music on that night, right?
Correct.
Which maybe still has some impacts. I'm not sure yet. Ellen, Kathy, do you have a request that's formal into Ellen for live amplified music on Sundays from 4 to 7 p.m.? Do you have anything?
When I came in that day, you were there. Yes.
It's there. It's in the back.
It's just a handwritten note by Kathy, yeah.
All right, but meaning that she doesn't have to do anything else like live, you know, provide all the other documentation that we do when we issue some of the other things?
Well, this isn't a one-day local license, so, no. Not as far as I know. Sam could answer that better than me. But she did put it in writing and it's signed.
Yep. Which is what we've always done. What would you guys like to do? You can either-
Should we make a motion to approve and then have a discussion?
The other thing is you could also, you could also decide that you want to wait for Sam. He's always waited for us. So go ahead, make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
I feel like they've done what we asked them to do. They went through a rigorous process with the state. The state has seen fit to allow them the leniency on the sprinkler system. And, you know, the only concern that we have is, or that I have is about volume and working out sort of negotiation between them and their neighbors with amplified music. And I don't, there's nothing that we have, because we did not finish our sound ordinance. We don't have any recommendations at this point to give them on that. But that's my only concern. But I feel like we should be rewarding the efforts they put in to go through this process.
Basically agree with that. The good neighbor policy thing is going to be the big thing here. We get more complaints from the neighbors, we're going to come visit you. I just want it known right out front, okay? So be good to them. All right?
We do, yes.
My, before we ask for a vote, my discussion would be, I certainly think that the process is taking a long time, that you and Greg are probably going to maybe, probably manage noise. And I'm willing to take that risk. And the only other thing I would say is if we make an affirmative vote tonight for you to have the amplified music on Sundays from 4 to 7 p.m., if we've missed something that Sam brings to our attention that you're going to have to add to as a stipulation to what we've allowed you to do, whether it be anything, which I don't know what that might be, that you abide by what he-
Absolutely.
All right? As long as you'll agree to that, then I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So we can have music on Sunday?
Yep.
All right. Long time coming.
All right, I think we have a, what do we got left? A one-day local license? Did we do that one?
Yeah, we did it.
All right, what else?
Minutes.
Minutes, good. All right. Let's review the minutes. We were all here for the last minutes.
Yes.
Did anyone find any things they'd like to change? So make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept is read.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Start signing things?
Yep. Do we have much correspondence in there that I didn't see?
There was just one notification that came in today. It's not listed on your, like, to each other copy.
Okay. Good, I can make this last 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Actually, this, I can't make this last 10.
Oh, Lawrence.
I can't make it last 10 minutes. So, all right.
We have Lawrence.
Okay.
Have a temporary recess until the public hear-
Certainly, yeah. Let's sign some of the stuff. Everyone can get up and stretch if they'd like when we're signing.
Jeff, can you do something that's not on the agenda?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, how much gravity is involved?
No gravity at all.
The new draft permit is out.
Now, let me ask a question. Can you hear me all right? What does a new draft permit mean?
Okay. Going back to the basics.
Yep.
We are not allowed to discharge Town of Newbury stormwater into the, quote, "waters of the U.S.", which starts with a puddle and goes all the way up to the Atlantic Ocean, the first 12 miles of it. Okay? Unless we have a permit from the EPA. Okay? Now, they are, EPA is giving us conditions. Now, obviously, we can't keep it from raining and we can't avoid, but we can be fined. So if we don't pay attention, we will be fined. So obviously, we're paying attention. There are certain things that we have to do almost entirely internally. And unfortunately, a great deal of it is simply record-keeping and bureaucratic nonsense as opposed to real progress on cleaning up stormwater. But that's the way it is.
John?
Yes.
And I don't mean this untongued and cheap. What do towns like Lawrence, what do big upstream cities do when they have stormwater discharges now into the river?
Well, there was a permit issued in 2003 that was supposedly for five years. Due to manpower problems within EPA, that five years turned into 11 years. Okay? They obeyed the rules. Lawrence, for example, and Havrell both did what they were supposed to and cleaned up their act. And that permit was relatively benign. It wasn't the category of a pain in the neck. It was not a big deal. And we went through the same thing ourselves. Doug did a great job with it for five or six years until I got involved. And he's still active in it. Some towns got fined. Portsmouth got nailed. Fall River conquered, surprisingly. Eastham, down on the Cape. Plasto in New Hampshire. Various odds and ends of sins.
Now, what did they have to repair? All their stormwater separate them from the-
Well, they, I don't know what their problems were. There was something they did or didn't do that got EPA to land on them.
Yep.
Now, although the fine is $15,000 a day for not being in compliance, from what I've been able to gather, nobody has had to pay more than $55,000 or $60,000. I mean, it's not EPA's interest to bankrupt small towns. But they do, obviously, you know, a lot of towns would simply ignore them if they didn't have some stick to get our attention. Now, there are six main categories of things. Do you want me to keep running off at the mouth of-
You know what? We got about five or six minutes and you're doing great. You're doing great.
You just want me to keep killing time? Sure.
But we're learning.
Hey, I'm Irish. I can talk until 9:30 tonight.
We're learning.
As long as somebody gets me a glass of water.
How about scotch?
Even better. Okay, the six things, the first one is public education. And that's in the category of, there's four categories that we have to deal with. The public as a whole, industry. And we've got one industry and three marinas. That's our industry. Commercial in general, which would be a couple of gas stations. And the final one is institutions, which would be schools. We have only got, we've only got schools. Now, strangely enough, the worst potential polluters in the Town of Newbury are not in the high-density part of town that this permit applies to. We only have to do these things in the areas that, in the so-called MS4, Municipal Separated Storm Sewer Systems, MS4. And that, of course, is right around here, runs down High Road, Byfield Center, Faveland, most of Central Street, and the Academy Park. All of Plum Island, although Plum Island is no problem for us at all for obvious reasons. But the Town Barn is not in the MS4. Parker River, where our one industry and all our marinas are. The landfill is not, Trident Regional is not. The parking lot of Trident Regional. So go figure. The second one is public involvement. And as I've said so many times, people have been absolutely wonderful about helping and offering to help. And we've got all kinds of volunteer labor on this. And that's pretty much taken care of that problem. That's taken care of itself. The third one is illicit discharges. And that involves seven different tests for every one of our, I think at the moment I've tracked down 97 outfalls. That's always changing by one or two. But I think we're pretty close to knowing we've got 97 outfalls. We got to do six different tests on those outfalls over a period of about three years. And the last 30 odd per year.
Now, outfalls are a culvert that discharges to a-
The outfall is the last pipe that goes into waters of the U.S., which is either a wetland, in some cases it's just virtually a swamp, and other cases the Parker River or the Mill River or the Plum Island River. And that is quite a program. Mercifully, we've got Yvonne Boswell, who is a chemist and very active in Parker River Clean Water. And we've got a number of volunteers. So I think we've got that one pretty well manned. I've been trying to get people that have some sort of a scientific background that, you know, can deal with that kind of precision. And I think we got them. I think they're here. We did buy one gadget which will test for conductivity, temperature, and salinity. We get that all at once with one piece. And we're going to, in the spring, we're going to start training people with that. And probably as the time goes on, we will buy the rest of the equipment. I don't, the other stuff needs reagents. And I don't want to buy a lot of reagents because they have a tight shelf life. And until we, there's no particular point in doing this until the bell rings. And the bell hasn't rung. The bell is probably going to ring the latter part of 2016. They just extended the comment period to, I don't know, March, I believe. We already got our comments in.
Well, you're ahead of everything, right? You're ahead of current.
Well, with the way this thing has been going, you'd have to be almost dead to be not ahead of it.
They're not a hard crowd to keep ahead of.
I mean, we're talking about the permit was supposed to go out in 2008. And it's what now, 2014? And we've got two years to go? But we've got to, the comments have to come back. And then they've got to rewrite it and put that out again. And one of the comments from the last go-around was, "For heaven's sakes, give us six months notice. When you finally decide what you want us to do, make it effective six months from then." That gives towns the ability to get into the funding cycle. And which, so far, it would appear, we're not going to need any more funding than we have right now. Because the $5,000 we've got in our budget, the last two years, three or four of it went to Tim for stormwater projects. So, I mean, we're, I think we're in pretty good shape with the funding that you guys have provided for us now. The fourth thing is cleaning up our documents. And we're in the process of doing that. The subdivision rules and regs and the stormwater rules and regs. They're just about ready for a public hearing. They're really close. The, Doug does pretty much the number five thing, which is pay attention to sedimentation during construction. He's out there on top of that. There are a few, very few jobs that really don't fall within his, just the nature of the town. You can't be very far from a wetland if you're in Newbury. And all the good land is gone, so the new stuff is all, you know. So that is, pretty much Doug's going to be handling that in the normal course of events. And the final thing is a real pain for, I told Tim, not realizing that he was about to resign, but I told him the only thing worse to have my team in there helping him with the paperwork that he has, the only thing worse than that is if he had to do it himself. So we've got people, we've got three people that have volunteered to work with the DPW. It's, again, it's a case of record-keeping. Almost nothing is gonna happen because they're already doing all of the right things, okay? The salt shed is covered, they clean up the catch spaces, they street, sweep the streets, et cetera, et cetera. But now we've got to have a system of documenting it and putting a plan together. There, there does have to be two, two plans initially. One is a so-called notice of intent, not like the Concom one, this is different, that says in, in brief, what are we gonna do? Okay? And if they approve that, then they give us...
You have to open the public hearing, sorry.
Oh, okay. Ready to go? That's all right.
One last comment, one last comment before you leave.
If you got a couple of hours afterwards, I'll just keep running.
Okay, one last comment before you do it. Is, um, Jimmy Cunningham went around with the gentleman who dug out all of the drains two years ago. He not only inspected them, the things they were in, looked to see if there were other things in, he GPS'd them. That's huge.
And that is...
That's huge. So it's documentation.
And that is exactly what I mean by how people have been absolutely wonderful.
So, I mean, that was a lot of days' work. That was a lot of hard work.
Jimmy's had a whole working week.
So kudos to the board and to Jimmy.
Forty hours logged on that exercise.
I just wanted to say that.
All right, we're gonna open the, the public hearing, but I have to say this. John, thank you very much because a lot of that...
Can you do our mailing, Kevin?
A lot of that, put it right on the agenda.
Now, you're in the mailing room.
A lot of that we weren't aware of. So I'd like to invite...
Can we come up with this?
Yep. No, I mean, you can either stay or come up. Why don't you come up and join us?
Yep. I might highlight it here.
Uh, don't make a mistake on that.
John, are you coming up?
My reading is the public.
Yeah, you're gonna, before we do it, let's hold one.
George, I'm well, how are you? It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
John, why so high?
Good to see you. And I don't think...
Okay, this Elizabeth.
You got it?
That's right.
Sorry, we got leave on the other end.
They'll just think you're all not very bright.
Have you met Elizabeth?
All right, good to see you.
Nice to see you. I'm moving down the table. Here we go.
Hi, George. Hi there. Good to see you. All right. I always ask for a motion to open a public hearing. I guess we don't have to, but it seems like this public hearing is going to undergo some changes. So let's have a motion from the, the selectmen to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
None.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, we have, uh, I just call, uh, the meeting of the planning board to review the site plan review for seventy-six Newbury Port Turnpike.
All right. And, um, we're starting into Martha.
Somebody needs to read the public notice.
Oh, go ahead, Damon.
Legal notice, Town of Newbury Board of Selectmen and Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty at the Newbury Town Hall, twenty-five High Road, Newbury, Mass, the Newbury Board of Selectmen and the Newbury Planning Board will hold a pub, a joint public hearing for a water supply protection overlay district special permit. Board of Selectmen and for site plan review approval, Planning Board, for development of a mixed-use commercial building to house a yoga studio and support spaces as rental office units on the property at seventy-six Newbury Port Turnpike. Map R forty, forty-seven, parcel sixteen, as shown on the plans entitled Site Plan of Land Located in Newbury, Massachusetts, dated November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as described in the supporting document prepared by Engineering Land Services, LLC, and David F., hmm...
J. Quaid.
J. Quaid. AIA Architects applicant, Michael Hulan, fifteen Maple Terrace, Newbury, Mass, owner of record.
Whoan.
Whoan, sorry. How far do I go with this, the whole thing?
I make mistakes like this, usually. I'll never find it.
Like, listen to me butcher everybody's name instead, huh? Tiffany R. Pomarino, P O Box three, four, five, Pride's Crossing, Mass, oh one nine six five, M A. The applicants are on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk in the selectman's office and the planning office, twenty-five High Road, Newbury, Mass. For more information, contact the selectman's office at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, extension three oh two, or the planning office at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, at extension three twelve. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the time and place designated above.
Great. Uh, thank you, Damon. Now, we have what would seem to be a simple process ahead of us. The planning board and ourselves have done things like this before in situations that have demanded this type of, um, let's say, uh, relief from the water supply protection overlay district by a special permit, or at least the ability for the selectmen to look at that process. And also, the planning board was here tonight to discuss the site plan review if, if it would need to be approved by the planning board. Is that...
That's correct.
Correct. Now, one of the concerns that befalls me as chair of the Board of Selectmen and certainly is const, has consternation to the rest of my members of the selectmen. And we'll discuss what we might be able to do, and I'll be open to any other suggestions. And Mike, it's gonna cause you some consternation. And that's the fact that unless I am wrong, and you certainly may correct me, the water supply protection overlay district special permit by the Board of Selectmen requires a super majority. And it doesn't take a scientist to see that we don't have that.
Explain to the people who don't know on the public watching what this is.
Super majority out of a board of five would be four. And our board is a membership of five, so it would be four. And right now, we only have three. And we do have maybe the abilities for a camera, but I'm not sure, Mike, if, starting the process where we have a selectman's election forthcoming, which would make the board relatively whole again with five, excuse me, with four, whether if we were to start into the process today, I'm not sure that the new selectman, if he were elected on the tenth and we had a meeting on the seventeenth because he wasn't present as we started into this, you'd probably have to resubmit. Are we all shaking our head because I got one right?
Yeah.
All right. So we have thought that we would have no problem meeting. And Martha, why don't you explain, there's another, uh, vector that enters into this because of the Conservation Commission has a meeting that has some relevant information, and that's on the seventeenth, right?
Um, that, that is most likely to be on the seventeenth.
Just grab the microphone so that...
It's likely that the, um, Conservation Commission will be hearing a notice of intent for that project on the seventeenth.
Of January or February?
Jan, uh, February, sorry.
February.
February.
Now, what I was, excuse me, everyone, thinking, that you have a meeting on the eighteenth.
Right.
And if my board, if you guys will have us, we could come and maybe do the same process at your meeting so that we would expedite your situation. And that would have our new selectmen aboard.
Right. Right.
So we would probably have to entertain a motion to continue this for the selectmen to the February eighteenth meeting?
Both boards do.
And, and then my next statement was that so would Martha's board, John's board.
Right.
The planning board. So...
So moved.
Does anyone, you know, everyone okay? Martha, you all right?
Seems to be getting a lot of people tonight. Um, but if we...
Make, make a motion, then we'll discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yep. Um, any discussion? Yes?
I'm concerned that if we have started the process as three, that we still have to have them resubmit. Or have we not really started the process?
It's my understanding that, that we...
Yeah, my, my understanding from Town Council is that, um, as long as you're not hearing any testimony tonight, you're, you're not really starting.
Right, okay.
You've opened it, you're continuing it. I do need to confirm with her whether, in fact, it needs to be re-noticed or not.
Right.
Um, so I'm hoping to get that...
Why would it have to be re-noticed if it's already been advertised and we're just continuing it? We haven't opened and closed it.
Right, it's gonna be continued with a const, a reconstituted board. Um, so that, I think, is, is the potential factor, but I'm, I've, I've...
I talked to her some about that today, and I need to confirm with her what the process will be.
And that's why we don't open part of the process, even the planning board's process.
I don't think, that doesn't sound like they would have to be...
Well, I, I think it's just a matter of, let's talk to Town Council. And whatever she advises, if it's belts and suspenders, I think we should do the belts and suspenders.
We don't have a choice.
May I, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, do you have any time restraints, or how does this impact your schedule?
I don't think, actually, I don't think we can take...
We can't even do that?
Yeah, we can't, uh, you can't have any discussion about it.
I was trying to be courteous, and I can't.
About his project.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I can't say a word, right?
I, I think it would be advised a lot.
Right.
Based on what we're advised by Town Council.
I think that's correct.
All right.
So we have a motion on the floor. Um, yes, uh, are we through with the discussion?
What day is that?
Uh, what day is February eighteenth? Does anyone have a calendar?
It'll be a Wednesday.
Wednesday. That's right. Your boards are always on Wednesdays, so... Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to, um, well, make the motion, if you would, uh, regarding, uh, continuing this, uh, public hearing until February the eighteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're okay.
And now we can, so we're continuing it?
It's contin, it's now, and, and then we need to close this meeting?
We don't close it, though.
Continue it. So we're done.
And for the record, we do have the green cards and the tear sheets.
Okay.
Okay.
John, we had it all under control. No, I mean you and I. Michael, I'm sorry, you know, but, um, we...
This, this...
Unforeseen circumstances. They do, we will get there as quick as we can.
All right.
Sorry.
It's terrific. Is nothing else on the agenda?
Well, yep. Did you get my notes?
I did, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Do we need to approve them or just sign them?
Really? The High Roads, let's let everyone clear out a little.
Okay.
Oh, good. Really? We're good. We don't care. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the warrants?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Let me just do one more thing, Sarah. On our wonderful journey. Um, the warrants, any meeting updates? Have anyone been anyplace? Has anyone discussed something? Chuck, you did something the other day, didn't you?
What did I did?
Didn't you have a meeting or nothing?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We had a coffee hour at, uh, the little pub in Byfield and brought in, um, just kind of a discussion with the, um, members of the school committee and concerned citizens, um, to go over whatever topics were there. The big topic was the stadium at, um, the high school and the, uh, new town hall slash police station and/or, and those were the major topics that were discussed. And, uh, who was voting for who in the special election, and that was it. So, that was it. It was a good time. No, I just put an email out there, come meet with me for coffee. I'm sorry?
I didn't ask you to send it to, okay?
Uh, just sent an email out to all of those that send emails to me. I bring them right down and click. And that's considerable today.
Some feedback from residents.
Yes. That's what I'm looking for. And, uh, something I've just started, and it seems to work out very, very well, so...
Okay. No executive session? Do I have a motion? Two. Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna stick.
All those in favor?
Aye.